Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Aston Township Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, February 16th, 2022 to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you remain standing for a moment, please?
Thank you. Philip Michael Iwaka. Mr. Iwaka lived in the fifth ward of the township and was age eighty-two at the time of his passing. Phil spent the majority of his life in Delaware County and Aston Township and graduated from Chester High School. He was the owner-operator of Iwaka Cleaning Services and more recently, Iwaka Taxidermy. Phil was a very religious man, and during his time in the U.S. Army, in service to his country, he served as a chaplain. Phil faithfully attended Tri-Chesapeake Baptist Church, and he served on the Board of Christian Academy for forty-two years. Mr. Iwaka had a special relationship with Aston Township through his service on the Aston Board of Health, where he was a member for over twenty years. Family and friends enjoyed his comic relief, and he freely gave to the township staff, who knew Phil as a nice man, a good man, who will be sorely missed. May he rest in peace. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, just a couple of things to clean up. Just to mention, so we have in the record that the executive session was held with the attorneys on February 14th, 2022, to discuss a personnel matter. Moving on, I need a approval of the minutes of the special reorganizational meeting of January 3rd, 2022. Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 19th, 2022. I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, moving on, the reason everyone's here tonight. Proclamation. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
Okay. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, proclamation. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Aston Township desires to recognize and honor Sergeant Robert Simpson of the Aston Township Police Department on the occasion of twenty-five years of faithful and dedicated service to Aston Township and the residents of Aston Township. And whereas, Rob Simpson was born in Philadelphia and raised in Yaden Borough, Delaware County. Rob knew from a very early age that he wanted to be a police officer, as he had had the desire to help others and furthermore serve as a role model for his chosen profession. Rob was hired by the Septa Transit Authority Police Department in June of 1990. During his service with Septa Police Department, he met his wife, Alicia, and they were married shortly thereafter. And whereas, Rob was hired as a full-time police officer for Aston Township on October 7th, 1996. Rob served as a patrol officer until August of 2013, when he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Over the past twenty-five years, Rob has received many commendations and accolades for exemplary police work. Rob has also served as a leader, mentor, and role model for many young officers, providing them with the guidance necessary to be a community role model. Rob's ethical and moral principles, along with his twenty-five years of exemplary job performance, has earned him the respect and praise from his fellow officers within the Aston Police Department and his law enforcement colleagues across Delaware County. And whereas, Rob has served in many roles over the years. Some include being a member of the Delaware County Major Incident Response Team, PennDOT Liaison for Aggressive Driving Enforcement, Crash Reconstruction Officer, and Police Union Representative. No matter his role, Rob has embodied the spirit of him being a team player, as he knows the importance it has in the structure and development of a police department. And whereas, Rob resides in Aston with his lovely wife, Alicia, and his two daughters, Juliana and Emily, Rob has proven himself to be a valuable asset to the Aston Police Department and to the community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Aston Township Board of Commissioners is proud to join with all of the Aston Township residents to congratulate Sergeant Rob Simpson on his twenty-five years of dedicated service duly reclaimed this sixteenth day of February 2022. Signed by all Commissioners.
Rob? Congratulations. Would you like to say something? Congratulations. I really appreciate the effort you gave Aston Township. Thank you. All right, moving on, committee reports. Commissioner Dougherty, please.
All right, I have a revised Treasurers' Report for December 2021. Total cash in the general fund was $2,433,541. Other funds include the TD Bank Bond Fund Checking Account with a balance of $2,151,564; the TD Bank COVID Relief Fund Account with a balance of $754,296; the TD Bank Capital Checking Account with a balance of $731,996. Total cash balance for the township as of December 31st was $10,210,692. Now I have the Treasurers' Report for January 2022. Total cash in the general fund was $2,147,171.99. Other funds include the TD Bank Bond Fund Checking Account with a balance of $1,328,470.26; the TD Bank COVID Relief Fund Account with a balance of $754,376.64; the TD Bank Capital Checking Account with a balance of $731,058.62. Total cash balance for the township as of January 31st, 2022 was $9,038,114.58, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Pendigris?
Thank you, Commissioner Stewall. Public Works Director's Activity Report for January 2022, February 1st, 2022. The following report highlights the main activity of Public Works Department, which consists of Director of Public Works Russ Pallmore and the Highway Department. All metal was picked up throughout the township. All vehicles were maintained and serviced. All street light issues were reported to Lenni Electric for replacement or repair. All township parks have branches and trash picked up by the Highway Department. All parks, retention ponds, and islands were cut, edged, and cleared of trash. All small engine repairs are completed in-house. All 811 coal sheets were reviewed and marked where necessary. Christmas tree pickup service was provided to our residents on their normal trash day. All holiday decorations were removed and placed back into storage. The Highway Department completed delivering the Aston Township calendars. The Department continued to ready all trucks and equipment for the winter season. The Highway Department kept our roadways clear with snow and ice for five snow events totaling eleven inches of snow. The Department repaired a damaged guide rail on Old Pennell Road. Our sanitation department picked up ninety-one point oh-nine tons of recycling and four-hundred-and-fifty-three point forty-two tons of residential waste in the month of January. Please remember that the first full week is metal and appliance week. Bulk trash week does not exist anymore. Anything that can burn can be put in the trash on a curb for trash at any time. Please have your trash at the curb by 6:00 a.m. on a designated trash day. Any questions or complaints, please contact Russ Pallmore, Director of Public Works, at (610) 494-8005. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Barry?
Thank you, President Stigall. Police report. Incidents in January 2022. Incidents handled: four hundred and sixty. Accident investigations: twenty-one. Criminal investigations: twenty-nine. Value of stolen property: thirty-eight thousand four eighteen. Value recovered: thirty thousand dollars. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. I have the two reports tonight. This is Building and Codes Department Report dated February 11, 2022. The following report for the permits and licenses issued for the month of January 2022. Beginning balance: zero. Total income from building permits and general contractors licenses: thirty-eight thousand sixty-seven dollars. Total electrical permits and licenses: three thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Total plumbing and heating permits and licenses: two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven. Income from Board of Health licenses: four hundred and twenty-five dollars. There is no income for peddlers and vendors or commercial maintenance inspections. Income from certificates of occupancy: nineteen hundred dollars. Income from rental licenses: twenty-four hundred dollars. Income from street openings: one thousand sixty-five dollars. Total revenue collected: fifty thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Total revenue collected year-to-date: fifty thousand two sixty-two. Total for 2022, again, fifty thousand two sixty-two compared to January of 2020, which was five hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. I also have a land development report. Contains two land development applications plus a couple properties that are being renovated that have been an issue with residents, and I'm going to read them too. Thirty-four seventy-one Conker Road, that's the former CN Skate Palace. The McFadden Group Incorporated, a real estate development company from Westchester, Pennsylvania, doing business as Thirty-four Seventy-One Concorded Road LLC, has purchased the former CN skating rink property located at Thirty-four Seventy-One Concord Road. The property is immediately adjacent to some of the rear yards on Marionville Road and Shuebrook Lane. The developer is planning to demolish the current structure and proposes to build a four-story, one-hundred-thousand-square-foot indoor self-storage building and an outdoor area for the storage of boats and recreational vehicles. To that end, the developer appeared in front of the Aston Township Zoning Hearing Board on January 25th and was granted a special exception to operate a storage facility in the commercial zoning district, as well as a variance for the building height of forty-two feet, where the current maximum height is thirty-five feet. A variance from the normal parking requirements was also granted as the parking need is not relevant to the normal requirements. The Aston Zoning Hearing Board is a separate entity from the Aston Township Board of Commissioners, and by law, the Board of Commissioners have no control or influence over the Zoning Hearing Board, which hears petitions related to codified ordinance in Aston Township. The next steps in the land development process will be for the applicant to appear before the Delaware County Planning Commission and subsequently in front of the Aston Township Planning Commission, and finally appear in front of the New Construction Committee to review the applicant's land development site plans. The meeting dates are yet to be determined, and the public will be advised in advance so they can attend. Next, we have the Holfelder Brothers subdivision. Holfelder Brothers has applied for a preliminary final subdivision of a parcel currently known as the Village Green Senior Community. The area of the tract contains thirty-six point oh acres and is described as one deed, one folio, and one tax map number. The parcel consists of two tracts, one located on the west side of Pennell Road, Route 452, which is zoned MH Mobile Home Park, and contains the Village Green Senior Community. The second tract is located on the easterly side of Pennell Road and contains several residential structures and is zoned CC Commercial. The purpose of the submission is to record a plan indicating two lots with separate folio and tax map numbers for each lot. The plan submission is not proposing any improvements. The applicant appear in front of the Aston Planning Commission on January 26, 2022, to review the subdivision plans. The Planning Commission approved the plan as presented, incorporating the comments from the Delaware County Planning Commission Letter of January 21, 22, and Penone Letter dated January 25, 2022, and the Aston Planning Commission comments regarding sidewalk and curb waiver being incorporated into the final plan. Likewise, the applicant appear in front of the New Construction Committee on February 7, 2022, to review the subdivision plans. The Board of Commissioners will consider approval of the subdivision plan at its legislative meeting tonight. The developer, I have Victory Car Wash now, Fifty-One Forty Pennell Road. The developer, Jackpot Properties LLC, is currently demolishing and renovating the former car wash at Fifty-One Forty Pennell Road. The renovations include gutting the existing wash tunnel to accommodate the state-of-the-art automated wash equipment, removing the canopy and gas dispensing units, adding new outdoor cleaning equipment, new fencing, buffering, and adjoining residential areas, and new stormwater management. The new building will improve the appearance of the business area there. Next, we have Fifty Twenty Seven Pennell Road, which is two properties up from where we are tonight. The property owner, developer, for the property at Fifty Twenty Seven Pennell Road is renovating the existing building to accommodate a large medical provider in the area. The renovations include removal of the canopy on the left side of the building, restoring the external periods, and totally repaving of the parking lot. Work has been delayed on the internal renovations while the proposed occupant revises plans to fit their business plan. Hopefully, this will not be delayed too long, as the appearance of the building and the property is less than acceptable. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Bowden?
Thank you. The first report I have is from the Aston Library. They'd like to announce that they're going to have free chair yoga with Ms. Lisa on Tuesdays at 2:00 p.m. in the gym, starting March 1st. You can sign up through the calendar at www.AstonLibrary.org. I'd like you to check out the museum passes for free with their library card. Ten different local museums are now available. And Ms. Debbie will be having storytimes outdoors again when it gets warmer in March. For now, you can see her storytimes on our Facebook page or her email at debbie@astonlibrary.org to be sent activities and information. The next report I have is the Aston Seniors. Their next meeting is going to be February the 24th, Thursday, at the Aston Community Center. They'll be serving a hot meal. Lunch will start at, their meeting starts at 10:45 with lunch at 12:00. They're going to be playing bingo. Membership is open to all residents, fifty-five and up. And the last report I have is the Park and Rec Committee. Everybody get ready, because the Easter Bunny's coming to Aston, and he'll be here on April 9th for an Easter egg hunt and an Easter bunny brunch. So stay tuned for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowden. Commissioner McGinn, please.
Yeah, just a fire committee report, Fire EMS report for January 2022. There were seventy-one fire calls, two-hundred-and-eight EMS calls, for a total of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine calls total in January, as well as three monthly drills.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report. I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Need a motion to approve the Bills and Payroll Report. Second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, at this time, we'd like to open up the floor to the, anyone who wants to speak about agenda items only. You need to step to the podium, state your name and address.
May I proceed, Mr. President? May I proceed?
Yes, please.
My name is Francis Catania. I am the Solicitor of the Chester Water Authority. I'm here with Catherine Miller. Catherine runs our grassroots organizing program, pointing out the struggle that the Authority is having with Aqua, who is trying, Aqua, Pennsylvania, who is trying a hostile takeover attempt. The way that they are doing that, as you probably have heard over the past four years, is they are trying to take advantage of the difficulties that the City of Chester has financially, and trying to force them to take action to end our existence and try to sell us. I want to thank the Commissioners for their efforts up to this point in helping us fight that, to keep the safe and affordable water that comes to your homes every day, and keep that cheap. Our rates are half to a third of what Aqua's rates are, and we want to keep affording that service to your residents. As part of our effort, we discovered pretty early on that there was an anomaly within Aston Township. Everyone here drinks Chester Water Authority water. Ninety-three percent of you pay the Chester Water Authority lower rates. Seven percent of you, predominantly in the second ward, do not. We recently pointed that out. Catherine Miller ran an event, I think, last Saturday, and if I may have her come up, she'll be happy to talk about that, what it means, and what the next step should be.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Catherine Miller. I actually live in Chester County, but like you and every resident of Aston Township, I drink Chester Water Authority water. As Frank said, there's a section of Aston Township, the northwestern portion, that their system was sold to Aqua in 1995. It used to be the Media Borough Water Authority, and they sold that to Aqua for twenty-five million dollars. And Aston Township got no financial benefit or any benefit from that sale whatsoever. And those residents in that area, which we lovingly call the Aston Six Hundred, there's six hundred and seventy-two businesses and residences that are affected by this, they just get permanently higher water rates for being Aqua customers. They drink the same exact water as the rest of the township, but pay two and a half times more rate. To put that in dollars, for households using about forty-five hundred gallons per month, typical household would pay one thousand seventy-two dollars a year for their water if they are Aqua customers, and they will pay about four hundred dollars if they are CWA customers. So that's over six hundred dollars more that those customers are paying, going to Aqua shareholders as profit that the rest of the township doesn't have to pay. Why should that portion of the township be penalized just because they're Aqua customers? So we went door-to-door on February 5th, some volunteers and Chester Water Authority employees, and handed out these water glasses in a little gift box that said, "You've been drinking our water for fifty years. Have a glass on us," and gave some information. Unfortunately, the way Pennsylvania state law is written, once a water authority is sold to a for-profit water company, a municipal authority, like Chester Water Authority, cannot compete for that business anymore. They're basically granted monopoly status at the state level, and so we can't even go get those customers if we'd like, because Aqua has a monopoly on those customers. And so maybe perhaps state law should be amended to allow some competition there between municipal authorities and for-profit investor-owned utilities. And we've spoken to Senator Kane and to Rep. Kruger, who have been very supportive of Chester Water Authority up to now. This is also a cautionary tale about privatization, because in 1995, Media Borough Water Authority had about the same rates as Chester Water Authority. So there really wasn't like a price differential there. But now, over the years, they pay two and a half times more, because Aqua's prices have just kept going up and up and up. So we don't want the rest of Aston Township to fall to that same terrible outcome. If Chester Water Authority is sold to Aqua, you will also be paying that extra six hundred plus a year in water rates. So we have yard signs that people can take in support of Save Chester Water Authority. Go to savecwa.org to find out more information. I have window clings that you can put on your vehicle or in a business to support Chester Water Authority, and the materials that we had in the glasses are here too, if you wanted to see what the Aston Township residents were handed. Thank you.
The question that we always get is, what can we do to help? What you can do specifically is do what you've done before, publicly support through an adoption of a letter or a resolution where you think, or how you think this issue should be decided. Should the hostile takeover of the Chester Water Authority be allowed to proceed, or should it be stopped? Secondly, on this specific topic, it would be helpful if the Commissioners would give their opinion on what should happen to our ability to serve fully the Aston Six Hundred. Can we give them not only the advantage of our award-winning water, but can we give them our lower rates to allow us to compete? Amend the law, Senator Kane. Amend the law, Rep. Kruger. Let us amend the law to change that so we can compete with them and afford them lower rates. So we're here asking for your help. Thanks for your time, and we're happy to answer any kind of questions that you would have.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one brief comment. In terms of your guys' effort, as the second ward commissioner, I can say I got a number of calls on this with folks saying, "Hey, I never realized this," or, you know, "What can we do?" I know Commissioner Dougherty has some folks in the first ward as well. So while I know we can't control that, as you guys explained, fully supported, and it is a difficult thing that those folks and those businesses have to pay more for their water. So thank you for coming out and, you know, and alighting that, and we're happy to be supportive.
Mr. Catania, just one comment. We're obviously going to do a proclamation, and, you know, we did one a few years ago, but to upgrade. And also, I'm assuming that it would help to, for us as a board, to write to our elected representatives in Harrisburg, the State Senator Kane and Leanne Kruger. I'm assuming that's what you're...
Absolutely would, yes.
Okay.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Button, so can we leave them here with...
Sure. That'd be no problem. And just so everyone understands, we're going to be doing a resolution, which is on the agenda for this evening, supporting Chester Water, and they just wanted to come by and express their comments in support of that resolution that we're going to do later on. Does anyone else have any comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to Commissioner Higgins.
I make a motion to place the meeting in Sendai to hold a public hearing for zoning code amendments.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Nornbeck?
Thank you, President Stigall. Tonight on your agenda is consideration of two zoning code amendments that require a public hearing, according to the Municipalities Planning Code. The first one is with respect to a proposed amendment to Chapter 1278 of the zoning code to revise uses by right in the LI district for properties which are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Public notice of tonight's hearing was in the February 1st and eighth editions of the Daily Times. Advertisement also included notice of consideration of an ordinance amendment reflecting these changes. Prior to tonight's hearing, the application was reviewed by the Aston Township Planning Commission, held on September 22nd, 2021, which recommended approval. The Delaware County Planning Commission also recommended approval, following their meeting on October 22nd, 2021. The proposed ordinance is intended to increase the buffer between residential districts and the LI district to one hundred feet. It also prohibits outdoor processing of materials for businesses located in the LI district for those properties that are immediately adjacent to the residential district. Unfortunately, it does not reflect any current properties. It would only be effective for any future development in either the LI district or any residential developments that are proposed that are close to an LI district. That is the sum and substance of that amendment. If the Commissioners have any questions?
Anyone have questions? No?
No questions.
Anyone in the public have any questions on these ordinances?
Okay. The next matter is a proposed ordinance amendment to the Township's Wireless Communication Facilities Ordinance set forth in Chapter 1293. Public notice was advertised on February 1st in eighth editions of the Daily Times, which also included notice of consideration of an ordinance amendment reflecting these changes. Prior to tonight's hearing, the application was reviewed by the Aston Township Planning Commission on December 16th, which recommended approval. It was also reviewed by the Township's Planning Commission on December, I had that backwards, Township Planning on December 16th, County Planning on November 20th, both of which recommended approval. By way of background, in 2018, the township adopted a Wireless Communication Facilities Ordinance, which includes regulations governing the installation and construction of wireless facilities located throughout the township. In June 2021, the state legislature adopted House Bill 1621, otherwise known as Act 50, or the Small Wireless Facilities Act, which preempts any local regulations governing small wireless facilities located within the township's right-of-way. It requires municipalities to amend their ordinances in order to address those regulations. The proposed ordinance reflects changes or amendments throughout the entire body of Chapter 1293, where it references Act 50 as controlling for any regulation governing small wireless facilities in a public right-of-way. So things like permits, construction, co-location, all of those issues that arise with the installation, construction of small wireless facilities, and the associated... construction of small wireless facilities and the associated poles that are located within a public right-of-way are governed by Act 50. Everything else remains the same. So the chapter itself is many pages long, which we will not be reading tonight. So it's the entire body, we're just going to swap out because there's just so many changes throughout the body. So again, this was something that really the state told us we had to do, so we're doing it. If anybody had any questions?
No. Okay. In the public, anybody have any questions? Seeing none?
That concludes the hearing.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we take the meeting out of Sendai. That's the motion.
I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'd like to move on to old business, line item A. Consider a motion to approve preliminary final minor subdivision resolution. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution Number 2022-22. Preliminary final minor subdivision plan approved for Wholefather Brothers Incorporated. Whereas a preliminary final minor subdivision plan has been submitted for park, for a parcel of ground located at the southern intersection of Pendle Road, State Route 452, and Old Pendle Road, and is bordered, is bordered by Red Hill Road and Concord Road. Lot 1 is located within the mobile home district, and Lot 2 is located within the commercial zoning district. Whereas a formal preliminary minor subdivision plan dated the 27th day of December 2021, prepared by G.D. Hootman &amp; Sons, Sheets 1, Aston Township File 2021-06, has been presented to the Aston Township Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the Board of Commissioners recommend final approval subject to the following: compliance with the Pinoni Letter of January 25th, 2022; compliance with Aston Township Planning Minutes of January 27, 2022; compliance with Delaware County Planning Commission of January 21, 2022; and that the request to waiver for sidewalk and curbing only applies to this subdivision and does not apply to any other land, future land development or subdivision. Duly adopted this 16th day of February 2022, Township of Aston, by James M. Segal, President Board of Commissioners, and attested to by Kellyanne Pippen, Assistant Township Manager/Secretary. All that in the form of a motion.
I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item A, consider, under new business, consider a motion to approve the grant submission for Red Hill Road. Commissioner Doherty, please.
I make a motion to approve the Natural Lands Trust to submit a local share account grant to be used for the Red Hill Road property acquisition project in the form of a motion.
Any second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item B, consider a motion to accept a bid for the demolition of a home. Commissioner McGinn.
I make a motion to accept and award the bid from Ben Washington for the demolition of 110 Elston Road with the following conditions: one, verifying references for past work; and two, approval from the county for additional funding.
You have a second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item C, consider a motion to approve the contract. That was Commissioner McGinn's pounding us. He did a great job on that. Line item C, consider a motion to approve the contract with Starfire Corporation for July 4th fireworks. Commissioner Bowden.
I make a motion to approve the contract with Starfire Corporation in the amount of $18,000 for the Aston Township annual 4th of July fireworks display in the form of a motion.
We have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item D, consider a motion to accept a proposal for traffic cameras and license plate readers in Aston Township. Commissioner Doherty.
All right, a little bit of background first. At our April 2021 meeting, the Board of Commissioners voted to install license plate readers and overhead cameras at two intersections, Five Points and Pendle and Dudon Mill Road. Those cameras have been installed and they will soon go live. Tonight, we are voting to add license plate readers and intersection cameras at three additional locations. These intersect, these locations are Concord and Bridgewater Road, Concord and Dudon Mill Road, and Fisher's Corner. I anticipate these additional cameras to be operational by late Q3. These cameras are meant for investigative purposes only and will not be used for red light or speeding enforcement. I repeat, these are not red light cameras or speeding cameras. So I make a motion to accept the proposal from Plate Logic...
Second.
Not done yet.
Let him finish.
You're excited. I make a motion to accept the proposal from Plate Logic to install traffic cameras and license plate readers in three additional intersections for the Aston Township Police Department in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item E, consider a motion to approve signing the loan agreement with the Aston Township Fire Department. Commissioner McGinn, please.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve signing the loan agreement document with KS State Bank to certify that the Aston Township Fire Department followed the proper, proper steps to secure a loan to purchase a 2022 Pierce engine.
I have a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item F, consider a resolution supporting the Chester Water Authority. Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, President Segal. Township of Aston, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Resolution 2022. Whereas the Township Commissioners, for the best interest of the township residents and businesses, hereby resolve as follows: and whereas the Township Board of Commissioners supports the passing of House Bill 1936, we believe only utilities in distress should be able to be sold and want to keep our water public. And whereas Chester Water Authority has served our township well, the water quality is excellent with affordable rates and helpful employees. Projected rates and a hostile take, takeover can affect everything from rates to our, to our residents and could cause an increase in fees paid for hydrant rentals during a time when people are already struggling to make ends meet. And whereas the Township Board of Commissioners would like to, like Mr. Michael T. Dowery, receiver of the Chester Water Authority, to know that there are many in our townships that live on a fixed income, as well as single parents that are, that will not be unable to afford the additional cost of water, of which is necessary to live. Now, now therefore be it resolved and adopted this 16th day of February 2022, that the Aston Township Board of Commissioners support the Chester Water Authority and demand this hostile takeover be stopped. Attested to by Kellye Pippin Township Secretary, Assistant Manager, and James M. Segal, President of Board of Commissions, Commissioners. That's in the form of a motion.
I have a second. Questions or comments? I hope it works. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item G, consider a resolution amending the township fee schedule. Commissioner Higgins, please.
Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution 2022. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Aston Township, Delaware County, desires to amend the fee schedule previously set within the Aston Township codified ordinances, which chapters govern the issuance of certain permits, administration fees, application fees, and escrow fees, zoning applications, conditional use hearing fees, Board of Health fees, fire inspection fees, all license fees, and contractors licenses. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, has previously decided that these rates may be amended at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners by way of resolution. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, believes that amending the said schedules to more accurately reflect the cost incurred by the township for the administration of these matters is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Aston Township. And whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, hereby resolves that the fee schedules attached heretofore and incorporated where herein by reference as though the same were, were more fully set forth herein at length, are hereby adopted by resolution and incorporated into the subsequent resolutions as part here of March 1, 2022. Resolved this 16th day of February 2022 by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Aston, by James M. Segal, President Board of Commissioners, and by, attested by Kellye A. Pippen, Township Secretary, Assistant Manager, all that in the form of a motion.
We have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item E, consider a resolution for the submission of county aid. Commissioner Penn, the Grace, please.
Consider a resolution for the submission of a county aid, MS 339 application. This is an application for county aid. Therefore be resolved that we, the officials of Aston Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, in regular session, do hereby make application to the county for the allocation of the county's liquid fuel tax funds. Project description: This project involves milling of vituminous surface, 9.5 millimeter superpave wearing cores, 25 millimeter superpave base hot, not thermoplastic pavement marking, and pertinent work for the various streets in the township. Total estimated cost is $450,000. The allocation required is $18,000. It is, it is, it is certified by the municipality and the officers who exec, who execute this application, that all materials used and work done here under shall conform to the current Pennsylvania Department of Transportation specifications, and that all work will be done within the legal right-of-way where with permission of the abutting property owners. Duly adopted on February 16, 2022. In form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item I, consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 1293 of the Aston Township Zoning Code. I'd like to call on Commissioner Berry, please.
Thank you, President Segal. Consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 1293 of the Aston Township Zoning Code. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Ordinance Number 1020. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to amend Chapter 1293 of the Aston Township Zoning Code to incorporate the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act 50 of 2021 into the township's Wireless Communications Facilities Regulations. Whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners has previously adopted regulations for wireless communications facilities located throughout the township as set forth in Chapter 93, and whereas on June 30th, 2021, the Pennsylvania Legislature adopted Act 50 of 2021, known as the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act, which preempts and regulates activities of wireless providers within the township's right-of-way to deploy small wireless facilities and associated with new utility poles with small wireless facilities attached. And whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners now seek to adopt and incorporate these statutory regulations into the township's wireless facilities regulations, now therefore be it resolved this 16th day of February 2022, that Section 1293 of the Township Zoning Code is hereby amended as set forth in detail in the attached document, a true and correct copy of which is heretofore incorporated by reference, as if the same were set forth more fully herein at length. Effective date: This ordinance shall be effective immediately. Repealer: Any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability: The provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section therefore shall be adjudged to be invalid or unconstitutional, such his decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. That's attested to by Kellye Pippin Township Secretary, James M. Segal, President Board of Commissions, Commissioners. That's in the form of a motion.
I have second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Line item J, consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 1278 of the Aston Township Zoning Code. Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, President Segal. Consider an ordinance to amend Chapter 1278 of the Aston Township Zoning Code to regulate uses adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Ordinance Number 1021. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to amend Chapter 1278 of the Aston Township Zoning Code to regulate uses adjacent to residential neighborhoods. Whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners have previously identified permitted uses in a limited industrial district as set forth in Chapter 1278.02, and whereas the Aston Township Board of Commissioners seek to encourage business growth in the industrial parks while also protecting the health and safety and welfare of the residential communities that abut these industrial parks. Now therefore it be resolved this 16th day of February 2022, that the following sections of Chapter 1278 of the Aston Township Zoning Code are hereby amended. 1278.02, indoor processing recycling facility, subject to 1290.08. Industrial parks, subject to Chapter 1278.07. 1278.07, prior to the use, development, or expansion of a building or facility in this district in areas where such as use abuts a residential district, or use a buffer area or zone shall be provided, provided on the industrial property at its boundary with the residential use or the district. The width of such buffer shall not be less than 100 feet. No buildings or parking shall be permitted in the buffer area. Outdoor processing of materials is prohibited for properties which abut a residential district. Effective date: This ordinance shall be effective immediately. Repealer: Any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability: The provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section thereof shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. Attested to by Kellye Pippin Township Secretary, James M. Segal, President, and that's in the form of a motion.
I have a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'd like to move on. Escrow releases. Commissioner Higgins, please.
Thank you. I have two tonight. The following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Pinoni Associates for the month of February. It's a summary total, $4,909 in the form of a motion.
There's second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Second one, the following amount is for engineering fees to be paid to Ceruley Associates, Inc., for the month of February. Summary total, $907.50 in the form of a motion.
There's second questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That's it. All right, at this time, we have, open up the floor to the public. If anybody has anything, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Come on up, John.
Are you tired of me yet, or what? My name is John Marcus, 2345 Weir Road. I was informed about, about last month of Mr. Pedagradon, Commissioner Pedagres. And I thank you, by the way, for taking the time to inform me personally, that funds had been achieved and funds had been secured for the work down there for the water problem we have. I have a couple of questions, so this was two questions, actually. If we have any, is that time schedule or what's the latest on it? And if it was started date or anything like that? That's one question. The second is, is anything on the plans? Because my, my property has been affected, and back on the, on my patio and all that stuff. This is much of the sinking of my patio and all that stuff. Is anything to, to relieve the little bit, the expenses? I don't know if it's going to be to myself, or anything on the, on the plan itself is going to be to do for that, for that, the repair of that damage that's been done. And that's all I have on that question. And the other thing is, we have a little deer problem down there. Is any, any possibility we could put a deer crossing sign down there?
Yeah, John, as of right now, as far as your property, I think your homeowners is going to have to take care of that, okay? We thought as a board, and that's we more or less figured, we're not going to, we can't handle, well, we won't handle that. As far as, we're going to have, if we're, Joe bids, we'll go out in...
March or April.
March or April, for the, the total job over there.
Okay. I'm sorry, the, the answer said something before. It says you can't handle which one, what thing he cannot handle.
The work in your yard, it's, that's going to probably have to be on your homeowners.
They want to be working on my yard for the, for the, for the, for the work itself.
Yeah.
They want to dig the yard up anyway. But that thing in there has to be, you know, that's a damage caused by the problem we had on the water from the other side. It is. Derived on that one. You know, we will agree with that the last time we talked about this.
Well, again, like I just addressed to you, that's going to have to be handled probably by your homeowners or whatever.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to other. Commissioner Doherty, please.
Okay, tonight, I'd like to recognize the Board of Directors of the Rockdale Memorial Day Parade. Every year, the residents of Rockdale and Aston Mills look forward to one of the area's most anticipated rites of spring, namely the Memorial Day most anticipated rites of spring, namely the Memorial Day Parade culminating at the monument on Mount Road. Most residents don't know that this is the oldest continuous parade in Delaware County. 2022 will mark the parade's 141st anniversary. The earliest record of the parade is a Chester Times article dated May 31, 1881, that described the events of the day. The inaugural parade was hosted by Post 149 of the Grand Army of the Republic. At that time, Memorial Day, as we now know, it didn't exist. Instead, we observed what was known as Decoration Day. Residents would march to the streets of Rockdale to Cavalry Episcopal Church to decorate the graves of Civil War casualties with flags and flowers. In recent decades, the parade was hosted by VFW Bonaventure Clark Post Number 6613, under the stewardship of Mr. Jim Murphy. In fact, I had the honor of delivering the 2019 keynote address at what would turn out to be Mr. Murphy's final parade. Sadly, as the years have gone by, our older veterans have passed away, leading to a decline in VFW membership. This declining membership, combined with COVID-related financial difficulties, put the future of the parade in doubt. It was looking like this historic gem in the heart of Aston might itself fade into history. Fortunately, a group of concerned residents saw the writing on the wall and decided to do something to preserve this hallowed tradition. In late 2021, they took the initiative and formed a nonprofit organization to oversee the finances and logistics of the parade going forward. This nonprofit, led by its Board of Directors, will work with the VFW and American Legion to ensure that the parade survives long into the future. Nothing in life is free, and there are costs associated with this event. These costs include the traditional decorations for the podium and parade route. Additional costs include performers such as a disc jockey or band, as well as operational costs such as cleanup. The budget also includes money for hot dogs and beverages, plus frozen treats for kids. A Facebook page for the parade has been established if you want to learn more or want to contribute or volunteer in any way. I'd like to personally recognize and thank the following board members for their efforts: Dave Kelso, Pat Smith, Sheila Withhelder, John McFarland, Franklin Gender, Jill Lacston, Veronica Batter, Cadence Kelso, Larry Curry, Joe and Sue Ahern, Bernie Montecchio, Patty Murphy Oswald, Deb Slazicki, the Honorable Diane Holfelder, and last but not least, Bonnie Stufflet. Now, on behalf of the township, I'd like to present a check made out to the Rockdale Memorial Day Parade Incorporated in the amount of $500 to help you as you prepare for your inaugural parade in May.
Has anybody that can be in the support of the parade? Can you come up, Rob, please? Anybody, whether you're bored or not, if you can be in the support, please come up. Hand up someone on the podium, so you're in the back. Go up on the podium. Where the hell is that? Squeeze it a little bit. Two, three, whiskey. Katie, take care of that with Mr. Dougherty. Commissioner Pendlegrass, anything on the other?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. Commissioner Berry?
I'd just like to congratulate Rob Simpson for his 25 years of service. Thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
Likewise, my congratulations goes out to Sergeant Rob Simpson of the Police Department for his 25 years of service. Commendable. Thank you.
Commissioner Bowden?
Again, I'd like to congratulate Rob and say thank you, and I think he actually smiled tonight, so I want to congratulate him on that.
Yeah, that was rare.
That's all I have.
We better have a picture of that. Commissioner McGinn, please.
Yeah, just a couple of things really quick. First, obviously, congratulations to Rob Simpson. Second, just a thank you to all of our coaches and folks that run the Astanae Basketball League, and putting on another good season and having that opportunity for all our kids to play. I always try to do this at the start of the seasons, but just a reminder for the spring athletics, Astanae does have a full gamut of sports: lacrosse, softball, volleyball are all out there for residents to go check on their Facebook page, website. On the baseball side, of course, you see the pictures around, you have Aston Middletown and Aston Valley for baseball, as well as St. Joseph CYO, which has baseball, softball, and track and field. So a lot of different sports that are out there. And one last thing, too, as we look, as we enter kind of the spring and look towards next year, obviously, we have a great school district in Pendelco and school options there, but we also have a local private school in Holy Family, which is the former St. Joe's right on Concord Road. They're starting enrollment now. That's a pre-K, pre-K 3, pre-K 4. There's a full-day kindergarten in first through eighth grade. So another opportunity there, an option there for folks looking at education for their kids, grandkids, friends, family, neighbors, et cetera. So I encourage you to look at all the good opportunities we have in Aston for our children and take advantage of those and learn more. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. DeFeo?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Kellyanne?
Just congratulations to Sergeant Simpson and condolences to the Awaka Bell.
Thank you. Beth, Jo? All right. Once again, congratulations to Rob Simpson, Sergeant. He's from my old neighborhood, Philly. So proud that he did well. With that, I just need a motion adjourned.
No move.
Thank you.